All right, that quiets everybody down, right? Real quick.
That's what they're for.
Yeah, that's what they're for. Welcome, everybody, to the September 16th School Board of Manatee County Regular Board Meeting. I want to officially call this meeting to order. We're going to start with the reading of the district's vision and invocation given by Ms. Phelan.
Good evening. The school district of Manatee County will be an exemplary, student-focused school system that develops lifelong learners to be globally competitive. I do not see my invoker having arrived, so I'm going to wing it. If you'd all please rise, and I'll ask you all to bow your heads. Lord, I would like to bring you here into our boardroom today to be with all of us as we come together to make policy, to recognize our students, and to accomplish the mission of the district. Please watch over all of us, keep our schools safe, keep our students and teachers and families safe, and please help us to continue to work together well as a team and to bring unity everywhere we can. Amen.
If you please standing for the, please stay standing for the pledge. We'll first bring in the color guard from Bay Shore High School.
Forward, arch.
Members are Chris Ramirez, Hugo Hernandez, April Martinez, and DeBran Lopez.
Colors, bow. Right, face. Reset, arms.
Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms. F, face. Forward, arch.
You may be seated. Thank you very much to the Bay Shore Color Guard. All right, moving on to item number six, the approval of the agenda. I do want to add one agenda amendment. We're going to pull item number 20 from the consent agenda. The MOU was not received in time for the meeting, so that item number 20 is pulled. But the chair has also found good cause to amend the agenda, including all items listed under the amended agenda amendments on September 16th, 2025 agenda, updated on September 16th, 2025, and posted on the district website, manateeschools.net. We have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
See, a motion and a second. We do have Granicus up and running for the vote. And that passes five to zero. The agenda is approved. Let's move on to approval of the minutes. Superintendent Breslin.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. The superintendent recommends approval of the consent agenda for the September 16th, 2025, nope. The superintendent recommends approval of the minutes from the August 18th, 2025 School Board Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
Second.
And we're frozen already.
So we got a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Let's go ahead and vote on the approval.
I think we had to voice vote.
There we go.
Of those minutes. Motion by.
Ms. Bray, and I was second.
And those minutes are approved. Thank you, Ms. Cox. Item number eight, student celebrations. Ms. Carson, come on up.
Good evening, Board. Jamie Carson, Director of Communications. As you can see, we have a room full of bright, shining stars. In a few minutes, we're going to recognize our students' achievements that remind us of the excellence nurtured by our community of dedicated educators and staff who go to the distance every day. This evening, we also want to shine a light on one of those extraordinary staff members, someone whose quick thinking and heroic actions quite literally saved a life. Sydney Supa is an athletic trainer at Lakewood Ranch High School and has been a valued member of our district for the past nine years. Sydney is also active in her field, and she is serving currently on the Secondary School Committee for the Athletic Trainers Association of Florida, and she was the 2023 Athletic Trainer of the Year for the state. Recently, the University of South Carolina honored Sydney with its prestigious Lifesaver Award for her heroic response last fall during a football game when an emergency unfolded on the sidelines. Coach Jerry, who is also with us tonight, was injured during a play and collapsed. In the critical moment, Sydney did not hesitate. She immediately assessed the situation and began performing chest compressions and CPR, actions that saved Coach Jerry. Sydney, would you like to join me? Sydney, your actions exemplify the absolute best of our district, the dedication and expertise and the unwavering commitment to the safety and well-being of others. You remind us that behind every game, every practice, every student-athlete, there is a team of professionals who take their responsibility seriously. At this time, I'd like to invite Superintendent Dr. Breslin.
Good to see you, Sydney. Sydney's a familiar face. We've recognized her before for her outstanding work to our community, and we just wanted to say thank you. We're so happy that you were there and that you will continue to be there for the safety of the entire community.
Can you make a photo with the board?
Sure.
Dr. Breslin?
Sure.
Thank you. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you both. Thank you. All right.
Can I make a comment there real quick?
Yes.
I was just standing there, like, literally 10 or 15 feet away. I was at the parish football game that evening when the incident happened, and it was very serious. And my understanding is that she literally, you literally brought the man back to life, that you couldn't detect a pulse or anything when he was hit. And it's just, just amazing, you know? So, good on you, and I'm glad, sir, that you're still with us, too. You're apparently an icon and a great supporter of our football team, so thank you very much. It was just a great, it wasn't obviously a good thing to happen, but the way it's handled and the fact that we can get here today, and you're with us, and you're being celebrated is just all around good. So, congratulations.
So now, we're going to go on to the second student recognition, if that's okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're going to recognize some of our brightest, shining stars, and these are students who achieved the perfect score on the end-of-year Florida Assessment of Student Thinking Test. I'd like to point out that only 187 students across the entire state earned a perfect score last spring. And here in Manatee County, we are proud to have at least one perfect score in all the major assessments. To put that in perspective, for the ELA, that's the English Language Arts Reading Test, which is considered one of the most difficult, only one in 1,000 students score a perfect score. We also had perfect scores in math, which reflects our district's commitment to our math instruction. This evening, we're going to celebrate the following students for their outstanding achievement. At this time, I'd like to ask Logan to come up. Next up is going to be Zorin. Next up, we have Jackson. Next up is Bruno. And then next up is Weston. Next up is Alexa. Next up is Evan. And last, but certainly not least, is Zach. Unfortunately, not all students were able to be here with us this evening due to prior engagements. One of our students, Lucas, was not able to attend, but we have a short video of his school celebrating him, and we know that all the schools are going to have celebrations. So at this point, we'll show a quick video of Lucas celebrating and receiving his recognition.
Hi, I'm elated. I mean, he is such a great student, and he makes everyone proud. And so, to find out that he made perfect scores at the end of last year was extremely, you know, exciting.
Very surprising and curious. To like, everybody's here, me.
So, Lucas, we invited you down here to celebrate you today because you made two perfect scores last year on FAS, PM3 reading and math. Certificate for you, take home. It says this certificate is awarded to Lucas Cheseauray, right, for achieving a perfect score on this grade six FAS ELA reading assessment. And then, of course, the second one, same thing, for achieving a perfect score, and catch this, on grade eight mathematics as a sixth grader. So you made a perfect score as a sixth grader on an eighth-grade test. That is amazing. Let's give that to the board. Take these home and put them on your wall and remember this in your room, okay? The teachers are amazing. I know that he is a hard worker and that, that put together, you know, put that together, and we got perfect scores. We've been doing goal-setting with the students, and I'm hoping that they'll go back and look at what it takes to be a perfect scorer, and just hope that other students aspire to do the same, because it is doable, and it's something that they can achieve. And here at Brady Middle School, we teach students that if they believe, they can achieve.
You just like, go at your own pace, accept help if you want it, and you don't have to get a perfect score, but you should try that, and you should always try to do that. Very good.
So, I'd like to update the information. As you can tell now, I've put on my reading glasses, which is always of value to me, and I mentally made a note for me to always have them on in the future. We actually had 187 students in the district who scored perfect scores, and these fabulous students that you see in front of you are the individuals that scored perfect scores on two of the district, the two and three of the tests for the FAS test. So even greater accomplishment and truly demonstrates how bright their stars are. At this time, if it's okay with you, I open it up if anyone had any words of wisdom that they'd like to share with these fabulous students.
I'd like to hear their words of wisdom.
Do you want to share a few words?
I didn't think so.
All right, then.
Yeah.
Sorry. Thank you.
I talked to almost all of you today before we got started. I didn't get a chance to meet you. And as I told you, I was an English teacher, and those of you who have gotten math-perfect scores astound me because I was lucky that I passed all of my math classes. So, just, that's amazing, and I'm very proud of all of you.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, if it pleases the Board, I'd like to invite their family members up to join them for a group photo.
Absolutely, please. Come on up.
Great, so we're going to line up. If you could line up with your backs, or if you're right back here, and your students in front of you, that would be great. Students, if you could get the lineup right back here, after your loved ones. For the loved ones, obviously taller individuals in the back, so you can see the cameras, students in the front, and we're going to be facing the audience for this photo. It's really close down there. Perfect.
Should we move?
If we could shift, thank you for your patience. If we could shift, if everyone just take two steps, two and a half steps to their left, that'd be great. I was trying to make sure. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to take photos, you're welcome to come up front here and take a photo as well.
Is that what she said? She modified it? 187?
187 total. They had two votes.
And one of them had three.
Three perfect scores.
Yeah, that's awesome. I mean, one of them in eighth grade, eighth grade math, that proves we can do it. That's proof.
The young man in the green shirt, he had three.
Oh, did he really?
He was cool.
At least for their school, is he in high school, middle school or high school?
He will at all that.
Frankly, I'm high.
Laura, do you have any public comments?
What the heck am I smiling at your hands? That's right.
Now they're seating. Always good to have the student achievement and celebration of our students. That's obviously what it's all about, so, and pretty impressive, there's that many scored, perfect score on both tests, and one gentleman had three on all three.
That's amazing.
Pretty amazing. Bring this to public comment. We do not have any public comment this evening, so now we're going to bring up Ms. Angel Coloneso, come on up, our Clerk of the Court, to discuss Manatee County History Day. Thanks for joining us today.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me here, members of the school board, and Dr. Breslin, and General Counsel Pennley and Attorney Guy, thank you. I'm so glad that you allowed me here tonight to speak about Manatee History Day. For more than 39 years, the Manatee Village Historic Park, under the leadership of the Clerk's office and in conjunction with the help of the Friends of the Manatee Village Historic Park, put on the History Day. It used to be called the History Fair, but now it's the History Day. And it is a local affiliate of the Florida History Day and National History Day on those programs. And it's open to children, students from grade six to 12, and it's an academic contest like the, competition like the Science Fair projects are, only it's history projects. And studies have shown that students who participate in National History Day perform better on high-stakes tests, are better writers, and more confident, capable researchers, and have a more mature perspective on current events than their peers. Each year, National History Day chooses a theme for students to use in framing their research, and this year's theme is Revolution, Reaction, and Reform in History. And I've judged these before, and I can tell you, and you have a title, it's, there are projects out there, they can do anything they want as long as it fits within this category, and they get very creative when they do their research and make it fit into that theme. Students can choose between submitting a paper, a documentary, an exhibit board, a website, or a performance to showcase what they've learned. And to participate in the local contest, teachers must register student projects before January 30th of 2026. Exhibit board and performance judging take place Saturday, February 21st, 2026, and award ceremony will be held Saturday, February 28th. The best Manatee History Day projects are recommended to compete at Florida History Day in Tallahassee, with the possibility of competing at National History Day in College Park, Maryland. The program supports and strengthens education in our community and state and rewards students for their hard work and dedication. If anyone has any questions, they can email history-day@manateclerk.com or call 941-749-7165. They can follow us on Facebook and Instagram, @ManateeHistoryDay, and we are always looking for volunteers for those various things, and it can be as simple as sitting at home and judging the websites. You can come in and judge the exhibits, so they will be trained, volunteers are trained. You don't have to have any particular knowledge or skill set for that, and we welcome that, and we hope to have a great showing of students this year. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you for the partnership. Yeah, I think it's great.
I can nominate Tatum to be on your panel.
I do want to bring up Ms. Bradley, if you're okay to come up and say what we're doing in the district, wise for, to connect with this, the History Day?
Good evening, Board members. Superintendent Breslin? Good to see you up there. So, in our district, we are partnering with the organization to really build up the opportunities for our students, and so a lot of that is communication, just like we're trying to build communication with our Science Fair. Some kids are STEM kids, some kids are history humanities fair kids, and it's a wonderful opportunity that students can use, you know, on a college application, on a resume, or on, right? And so, we are partnering to help them with getting some judges and also getting communication out, really to show that pipeline, that History Day in Manatee County goes to the state and potentially the national level. And so, it's a really wonderful opportunity for students to showcase their research and just really exhibit great research skills, which is vital for students.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Board, any questions, comments?
I do. Ms. Coloneso, could you repeat what the categories for the submissions are this year?
Certainly. It's paper. It would be paper, documentary, exhibit board, website, or performance.
Oh, I'm sorry, but was there a specific subject?
Oh, the theme. Revolution, reaction, and reform in history.
Okay. Well, I would be honored to be a judge, so.
And I'm gonna officially call this meeting of the Leasing Corporation to order. And under the Articles of Incorporation, for the Manatee School Board Leasing Corporation, the members of the not-for-profit corporation are the members of the school board. The Articles of Incorporation provide the Board of Directors, unless changed by the membership, are the members of the school board. The officers are the president, vice president, secretary, and treasurer. The Articles also provide that the chair of the school board is the president, the vice chair is the vice president, and the secretary treasurer is the secretary of the school board, which is the superintendent. So I'm gonna go ahead and motion that we acknowledge Dr. Lori Breslin as the secretary/treasurer of the School Board Leasing Corporation. So do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on allowing Dr. Breslin to be the treasurer and secretary? She takes really good notes.
She does.
Nice handwriting.
Yeah.
You left out also registered agent.
And registered agent, excuse me.
You want to amend your motion?
Yes, I'd like to amend my motion to include registered agent.
I'll amend my second.
So now she can sign first off, right?
Yes.
All those in favor of the amendment, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, no? All right, sorry, thank you, Mr. Dye. So let's go ahead and vote on the final approval of Dr. Lori Breslin as secretary treasurer, as well as registered agent for the Manatee School Board Leasing Corporation. And that passes five to zero. Thank you all, and again, thank you, Mr. Dye. I'm gonna go ahead and gavel out and adjourn the School Board Leasing Corporation meeting. I'm gonna reconvene this regular meeting this evening, and that pushes us to item number 15, new business. Superintendent Breslin, item number one?
Item number one is approval of the resolution 2025-009. Superintendent recommends approval of resolution 2025-009, authorizing a section 1011.13 Florida statute tax anticipation note, series 2025, general fund.
So moved.
I'll second.
So a motion and a second. I know we did a workshop on the tax anticipation notes earlier today, actually.
Yeah.
Dr. Breslin, would you like to elaborate on what they are used for? Or would you like Ms. Sellers to elaborate on that?
I can elaborate. Sure.
Well, this, the closing for this tans will occur on October 9. It'll be, I think at this point, we're projecting just 45 million instead of the 55 million, and it'll have a maturity date of February 26, 2026.
Thank you. I don't see any board members lit up to comment, so let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the resolution 2025-009. And that passes five to zero. Item number two, Superintendent Breslin.
The superintendent recommends approval of a new job description for student account analyst, no financial impact.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Dr. Breslin, would you like to explain this new job description?
Yes, sir. It just reflects the actual job responsibilities of this position, no change on the pay whatsoever, just cleaning up to match current day responsibilities.
Great, thank you. I see no board members lit up to comment on this new job description. Let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the new job description for student account analyst. That passes five to zero. Item number three, Superintendent Breslin.
The superintendent recommends approval of the revised, of the revision of job descriptions in the communications department, no financial impacts.
I'll move.
Second.
And Superintendent, would you elaborate on this job description?
Yes, sir. This is a series of positions, cleaning up the language to match with current day task associated with each job, as Mr. Chapman and Jamie Carson have worked to reorganize the communications team.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Seeing no board members up to speak, let's go ahead and vote on the approval of this revision of job descriptions in the communications department. And that passes five to zero. Item number four, Superintendent Breslin.
The superintendent recommends approval of the revised job description of fiscal specialist to financial specialist, no financial impact.
So moved.
I'll second.
Superintendent Breslin, I'm assuming this is same type of thing, we're just cleaning up job description, no financial.
Cleaning up job descriptions, who they're assigned to, who do they report to, and the tasks that they work on daily.
Awesome, thank you very much. No board members lit up to speak, let's go ahead and vote on the revised job description of fiscal specialist to financial specialist. And that passes five to zero. Item number five, Superintendent Breslin.
The superintendent recommends approval of the reclassification of the job description and position of licensed practical nurse. And this is taken from the general fund.
Thank you.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have our motion and second. Dr. Breslin, if you can elaborate on what exactly, I know there were some emails and things like that about some nurses, so.
Absolutely. So this brings the position better in alignment with the industry standard. HR team did a wonderful analysis of the position and determined an increase was warranted, so we were able to fill these positions. We've had many unfilled LPN positions in our district, which of course impacts greatly our students and our schools. The financial impact of the reclassification is $66,574.26, which will be taken from the general fund.
Thank you very much. No board members lit up to speak, so let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the reclassification of the job description position of licensed practical nurse. That passes five to zero. Thank you, Superintendent. Moving on to new business, no superintendent recommendation. Board, we obviously do this every year with the Greater Florida Consortium of School Boards that we're a part of. They proposed a legislative program to us. Remember, if there's something in here that we as a board don't like and want to pull, it gets pulled from the whole legislative program as a whole. I know some of us were up there for the legislative day and got to experience some of that stuff. I'll open up to any board member who would like to comment and speak on the legislative program. Mr. Tatum?
Just wanted to point out on page three for us all, right above, the last two items above where it says academics and accountability, the second to last paragraph there, if you read that, basically says that clarifies the law that we talked about in a previous workshop, to say that if we want to, by a majority vote, we can exempt ourselves from the state requirements for educational facilities, and use the standard Florida building code and fire codes. So that's a step in the right direction to at least give us the flexibility to decide how much, you know, we want to spend and what codes we want to use to build our schools. And that's the whole point of that, by the way, is I just want people to know, is I just want to have the flexibility, so boards can decide whichever way they want to go, but at least they have the flexibility there. And then the next one, which says require the Florida Department of Education to include a cost-effective analysis in its recommendations, and stipulate that the department must prioritize the most financially prudent outcome for the taxpayer when making a final recommendation on the action to be taken based on a district semitic custody study. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we had to actually pay more to rebuild, to renovate pair than what we were gonna pay to rebuild it, but the custody report came back and said, no, you have to spend more and renovate it instead of rebuilding it. So I, we had a good discussion, and we got to the point where hopefully that we can get some statutory changes made there too, so that that situation will never happen again, and that authority remains with the school board at the local level. So we're making some progress on that, I just wanted to point that out, and thank you for your all's support.
And I do believe both of those will be on our own as well.
Yep.
Right.
Ms. Sellers, oh, I'm sorry, are we done?
Yes, I'm done.
Ms. Sellers?
I would like to just draw the public's view to, under academics and accountability, the second one down, remove the requirement for the state board to automatically annually adjust the school grading scale. I have high-horched about this one quite a bit, and I have talked to, you know, the public about this, that when we do our school grades each year, the Department of Ed gets in there and then shifts all the scores around, which feels like a constantly moving finish line. And it is frustrating for schools, for teachers, for parents. Your kids all achieved, you know, as we've seen in our district, our schools have continued to go up in score every year. They're doing great. And then the state goes and moves the finish line. So even though our kids now have a higher score than they did last year, we are now a B instead of an A in this school, or a C instead of a B in this school, because they keep moving the scoring. Because apparently there are too many As and too many B districts in the state, and they don't want them to be that many, which does not make sense to me. You would think we would want our schools to represent in the state, look at all of our wonderful schools, they're all As and Bs, rather than move the scale so that now we have less As and Bs. So this is, this is something that has annoyed me for many years, and I would really like to see that they not do this every year. I wanted to bring that to the public's attention.
Thank you. I will say too, just, I brought up during the session, our situation with the commission with the tax collector on our voted millage. And correct me if I'm wrong, the folks, you all who were there, it was kind of like, some districts were like, whoa, whoa, we don't have that happening, let's not rattle the cage and do something, and then their tax collectors started doing that. So that was not, it didn't seem like it was gonna be adopted. So that's something that we'll continue to tackle on our own here with the Attorney General and that sort of thing. But I did want to make sure I did bring that up, but it didn't look like there was really gonna be an appetite.
And, and if I can dialogue with you.
Yeah, absolutely.
A lot of them was really quite shocked that our tax collector was doing that.
Yeah.
And again, I didn't think they wanted to bring attention to their own district tax collectors.
Sure.
Because I pointed out that there are 67 tax collectors.
Yeah.
Some are doing it, some are not, and they have conventions too, just like we do. So I think that's why there wasn't an appetite for it.
Yeah.
But I'll bet you next year there will be.
Potentially.
Yeah.
So board, obviously the approval has to come from us for this, so just if there, I don't see anybody else lit up to speak on this item, so looking for a motion to approve the proposed legislative program.
So moved.
Second.
All right, let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the proposed 2026 Greater Florida Consortium of School Boards legislative.
And understand, if a district comes back and says, no, we don't want that, then we'll have to go back to the table.
I think, I think that item's just pulled, right?
Pulled, okay.
And then, yeah, I think it's just pulled from the program.
All right.
So that'll happen momentarily, we'll send it, our vote, back down there and see what they say.
Right.
And that is approved, five to zero. Item number two, our new business, is approval of travel expense associated with school board member Felton attendance at the 2025 National Conference on School Climate, Culture, and Violence, Knoxville seed 1,500. Ms. Felton, I'll give it to you to explain what this is.
So there, this is a national convention of people from across the country coming to talk about school safety. Not only is this, of course, a concern here, it's a concern everywhere. And as, not only am I on the school board here, but I'm also on the Florida School Boards Association's Ad Hoc School Safety Committee, and I'm also part of the district's School Health Advisory Committee, where we also talk about safety. So I'm very interested in participating in this. I know we have a staff person who's also gonna be attending as well, and I'm looking forward to being able to bring back to you and the rest of the board and the public what it is that I'm going to learn there to help us keep our kids safe.
Excellent.
Where is this event?
Oh, it's in Port Charlotte. So since it's national and it's local, I'm like.
Why not?
I don't have to fly anywhere.
It will cost us less.
All right, seeing no other board members looking to comment, we need a motion to approve in a second.
So moved.
I'll second.
In a second, and let's go ahead and vote on the approval of Ms. Felton going to the Conference on School Climate, Culture, and Violence. Ms. Kennedy?
I'm sorry, I thought I, I thought I had already voted, I'm sorry.
And that passes five.
I'm reading the next one.
Five to zero?
Sorry about that.
Item number three, approval of the travel expense associated with school board member showed attendance of 2025 designation of Senator Jim Boyd as President of the Senate, not succeed 1,000. Obviously, it's me, and it's Mr. Boyd, or Senator Boyd's designation going to the Senate, President. I believe Ms. Bray wanted to go too, but I don't think we got it in.
We just didn't get it in time.
Publish.
Yeah. The invitation was understocked on my table.
Yeah, I think we all got the invitation.
It's not till next.
Next.
We can do it next meeting.
Yeah, we can do it at the next meeting.
Correct.
We can do it at the next meeting.
So moved.
I'll second.
And Ms. Tatum?
So that, if you read the bottom of the invitation, it says it's from the Republican Senatorial Committee. And I'm having a hard time understanding how it is that we're gonna spend school board funds on, it's a purely political event, right? It's sponsored by the Senate Republican Committee, it's not, like, I remember when Governor DeSantis was inaugurated, the three of us who he supported were invited, and we all went up there, but we didn't pay our trip up there to go to his inauguration, so I'm just having problems with us paying for this, because it's a purely political event sponsored by the Republican Party for a senatorial campaign, and I just don't think we should be paying, using school board funds to do that. So I can't support it because of that, I don't think that's appropriate. That was my comment.
Okay, no worries. Anybody else lit up to speak? Ms. Kennedy?
Yeah, no, is there anything in policy that prohibits it? I mean, I do, I do see your point, but I feel if it's not a violation of policy, this is, this is our local state senator from Manatee County. I totally get your point, but I feel, and I appreciate that, especially, you know, you've been there before, you've been in this situation before, so you know better than I. But if it's not a policy violation, I'm okay with it.
Can we dialogue? So are we sure, for instance, that none of that, I don't know, there's not a fee to go to it, I guess?
No. It's just an invitation.
I was gonna say, none of that money is going to someone like campaign or something like. I just think, you're probably right, I'm just not gonna support it. I just think it sets a bad precedent when we're spending school board money to travel to what I would call purely political events, right? This is a purely political event, just like I wouldn't have expected the school board to pay for me to go to Governor DeSantis's inauguration. It's a purely politically oriented event, and we try and keep that, you know, I have this, you've heard me say this before, right? I have this five-step process I go through when I make decisions. Is it constitutional? I don't think this is unconstitutional. Is it legal or ethical? I mean, is it legal or illegal, or does it violate policy? Maybe it doesn't, maybe we don't have a school board policy. Is it ethical or immoral? I just think it's unethical to use school board funds to travel to a purely political event. That's what it is, there's nothing else to it, other than it's a purely.
But I, I feel, and I appreciate that, especially, you know, you've been there before. You've been in this situation before, so you know better than I. But if it's not a policy violation, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Can we dialogue? So are we sure, for instance, that none of that, I don't know, there's not a fee to go to it, I guess?
No. It's just an invitation.
I was going to say, none of that money is going to someone like campaign or something like. I just think, you're probably right, I'm just not going to support it. I just think it sets a bad precedent when, that we're spending school board money to travel to what I would call purely political events, right? This is a purely political event, just like I wouldn't have expected the school board to pay for me to go to Governor DeSantis's inauguration. It's a purely politically oriented event and we try and keep that, you know, I have this, you know, you've heard me say this before, right? I have this five-step process I go through when I make decisions. Is it, is it constitutional? I don't think this is unconstitutional. Is it, is it legal or ethical? I mean, is it, is it legal or illegal or does it violate policy? Maybe it doesn't, maybe we don't, we don't have a school board policy. Is it, is it ethical or immoral? I just think it's unethical to use school board funds to travel to a purely political event. That's the, that's what it is. There's nothing else to it other than it's a purely political event. And then my other two criteria are, is it dumb or dangerous, or is it financially responsible? But I just, I stop at number three there because for me, even if our policy maybe doesn't cover this, spending school board funds to go to a purely partisan, not only is it political, but it's a partisan political event, we shouldn't be using taxpayer funds to pay for our travel to a purely partisan political event. No matter what our policy does or doesn't say, to me, that's not an ethical use of taxpayer money. So that's what I stand on.
Okay. If I may? Yeah, no, more good points. I, I would just come back with that, again, the fact that this is not a board member going to some statewide political convention, or because there's that direct connection to our district, Senator Boyd's been very supportive of our district and because it's a, it's a Manatee County elected official, that's, it just feels different. I don't have any policy or legal or ethical definition. It just feels different to me. And I received an invite also, I'm not a Republican, but I received an invite, which to me
We all did.
Yeah, no, I would assume.
Superintendent received an invite as well.
Yeah, no, I would assume so. So that, to me, the fact that this is not, this is a very diverse guest list, so to speak, that's kind of a mitigating factor for me, so.
Okay. If it was sponsored by like Mr. or Senator Boyd himself or something, that would be one thing. I just think it's a bad optic. It says right at the bottom of the invitation, sponsored by Florida Republican Senatorial Committee. That's why I'm having my issue. If it was sponsored by even a private organization or some, some, you know, individual that was sponsoring the dinner or something, it's just a purely, it's sponsored by a purely political partisan organization. But I think we both said what we have to say and we'll take a vote and then we'll see how we go on it.
Ms. Felton?
All right.
I did not notice that and, and I'm
I didn't either.
Yeah, I'm actually glad you brought it up. Obviously, everybody knows I'm not a Republican and so I'm, I'm like, oh, they did invite me too. And it's, yeah. But I wanted to ask our attorneys if they had any thoughts on this topic.
I haven't researched it, so I wouldn't want to go behind without looking at the polls.
Yeah, I haven't researched it. I don't know of any policy, you know, as far as a school board policy that addresses it.
Then would it be maybe advisable to postpone this vote to the next agenda because Ms. Spray also wanted to go and then give the attorneys a chance to do some research? Could I recommend that?
I didn't motion and second it, so yeah, whatever the motion and second or wants to do.
What's the appropriate Roberts rules? Is it table and postpone?
It'd be a motion to postpone to a date certain.
Okay, then I'd like to
October 7th meeting.
Make a motion to postpone it to the October 7th.
I wanted to speak first.
Let Ms. Spray go and then you can go.
Okay. I don't look at this as a partisan event. I look at this as a relationship building. Senate President at the state, you know, has a lot of influence and from, coming from Manatee County. I mean, we go up and ask for money all the time and I believe that, you know, supporting our home, homegrown, might say, individual in this new role isn't a party thing to me because I didn't even see that. Didn't even occur to me. It was just an invite to support our Senate President that's from Manatee County. That's all it is for me.
Let's say the, let's say that someone from Manatee County was nominated to be the Democratic candidate for governor in the state of Florida, and we all got an invitation that said, hey, come to the Democratic nominating committee, you know, meeting, we're going to nominate Mrs. Jones from Manatee County to be the Democratic candidate for, for the state of Florida for the next governor's race.
That's way different. That is a, that's a candidate. That's a candidate.
Is he?
He's already there.
He's already voted as senator.
He's already been voted. It's nothing to do. This is just a swearing in at the Capitol and then a dinner event. There is no fundraising. That's already been done, I believe.
Well, he's already got the appointment.
He's already got the appointment. It's not, it's not a convention type event.
I just think it's a bad precedent to set. I mean, what if the Democratic Party or whatever party, the Independent Party, the Libertarian Party, they start inviting? I just think it's a bad precedent to set, to spend school board funds on events that are being sponsored by, by political parties. But I've said my piece and we've all said our piece and we'll take a vote.
All right. So I'll make, I'll make the motion to postpone if, motion to postpone this item until October 7th?
Yes, second.
Okay. So we have a motion to postpone this item until the 7th, so we can add the other board member. Seeing no board members let up to speak or comment on that, we can go ahead, oh, I'm sorry. We can go ahead and vote on that motion to postpone this to the October 7th meeting. So we can do both of them at once.
And give Legal a chance to
And, yep, they can look at it, yep. And that passes five to zero, so that item will be postponed to October 7th. Moving on to item number 17, just information only, local wellness policy 8510, annual report we have to do for 2425. So that moves us on to updates for this evening, instructional update. Mr. Jensen?
Good evening, Chair Choate, Board Member, Superintendent Breslin. I can't believe it, we're already six weeks into the school year. Time is flying by. Lots of great things are happening. And as you know, kind of throughout the year, our students are learning about all kinds of different things and Florida State Statute 1,003.42 specifies kind of a list of required instructional topics that we hit throughout the year. And occasionally in my board updates, I bring you times of the year where we have a lot of focused required instruction topics and this area of September is one of those times. As you know, last week, we had 9/11 Heroes Day celebrated in our schools, an instructional line to that which I saw and was really excited by. This week, we have Hispanic Heritage Month, which began 9/15. We have Constitution Day, which is tomorrow, which is instruction on the Constitution. And then that's followed by Celebrate Freedom Week, the last week of September. And that includes three hours of appropriate instruction in each social studies class, which includes an in-depth study of the intent, meaning and importance of the Declaration of Independence. And additionally, students must be led in an oral recitation of a passage from the Declaration of Independence at the beginning of each school day. So that'll be going on next week during Celebrate Freedom Week. This week, we're also finalizing our PM1 testing with three-through-eight math. The previous two weeks, we completed a K2 testing and three-through-10 ELA. PM1, as you know, serves as an important starting point for the school year for us to understand kind of where we're starting from in each grade level and across schools so we can start working with students and customizing education to meet their needs. So I look forward to sharing that finalized data with you at the October 7th meeting. So I'll be bringing that as part of the presentation at the next board meeting. You may also remember, a few months ago, I brought the state's VPK performance metrics and designations, which are kind of a new initiative where the state is, is rating VPK programs across the state. And as, as I presented to you, our, our schools are doing exceedingly well. Well, we just released, they just released the 2425 kind of VPK performance designations and the school district, Manatee County, VPK programs just excelled. There's kind of a five-tier rating system and there's, in the middle of it, it's meets expectations, above expectations, and excellent, and the highest rating. All of our, our school sites are, meets expectations or above, and 74% of our district VPK sites receive the highest designation of excellent.
Round of applause.
That's awesome.
So we, we were soaring before and we continue to soar and keep on improving. So it's just a pretty amazing and I think a testament to the Board and our community's investment in early learning and the amazing team we have here in the school district of Manatee County, including our teachers doing that work.
Absolutely.
And then going from our, our very young students all the way to our almost graduates, preparing for college career in life. We have, on September 13th, the ACT department hosted ninth and 10th grade preparing for post-secondary workshops at MTC. That same workshop will be hosted for juniors and seniors this coming Saturday, September 20th at MTC. And then we will also have post-secondary education night at MTC on Monday, September 22nd for students and families. Students can attend to learn about the college application process and meet with representatives from colleges, universities, military recruiters, and technical colleges. Finally, in the spirit of the amazing bright students earning perfect scores on their math assessments at the start of our board meeting, I just want to wish you Happy Right Triangle Day. Today is 9/16/25, which is three squared, four squared, five squared, making a perfect right triangle with the five squared being the hypotenuse. So Happy Right Triangle Day.
That's awesome. Good stuff. Operations update. Ms. Clark?
Good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chair, Board Members, and Dr. Breslin. So I have an update on operations. We have two job fairs coming up this month. September 18th, we have an operations job fair at Wakeland from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM. You know, that's where we're targeting our bus drivers, mechanics, HVAC technicians, electricians, and what have you. On September 25th, we have an in-person teacher and para, teacher and para job fair at MTC. That's from 4:30 to 7:30 PM. HR, working with the union, just completed the voluntary and involuntary transfer process. We had about, just a few teachers that transferred and no paras. HR has posted all of our teacher vacancies and it's about 31, a lot of them in the hard-to-fill areas. But with that, the Office of Certification held an Alternative Pathways to Teacher Certification event on August 27th. We had over 91 people attend that were interested in teaching. So we're hoping that those will translate to some of those vacancies. In benefits, we are in the September, month of September, and it's the Move Challenge. So Move is a six-week, team-based fitness competition where staff earn points for daily movement, healthy habits, and supporting one another. The Well You September Move Challenge started this, just Monday. We have several hundred staff members already enrolled. Better Me Health Coaching and Mental Health Coaching Platform, that's an app. The Well You program is providing 500 free subscriptions to Better Me, the app. And those apps are, you know, to support the journey towards healthier habits, reduce stress, and improved overall wellness, all in a way that fits your lifestyle. We have about 350 staff members signed up, soon to be 351 because I need a little of that in my life. Mark your calendars. The Employee Health and Wellness Fair will be held at Braden River High School on Monday, October 13th. That's from 11:00 to 3:30 PM. That's a record day, so no students. This is a perfect time to meet face-to-face with district benefit vendors and explore options for staff members and their families. There will be free screenings, wellness vendors, seminars, giveaways, and much, much more. If you want more information, you can find it on SharePoint in our Health and Wellness area. Food and Nutrition Services. Food and Nutrition Services is partnering with RC Hatton Farms to bring farm-fresh vegetables into our schools. RC Hatton has a 12,000-acre farm that was established in 1932 and is located in Pahokee, Florida. It's on the other coast. The farm will be, be providing green beans, sweet, and sweet corn on the cob. Our nutrition department looks forward to offering these locally grown items to our students and while also supporting the community. Green beans, sweet corn will be offered once a month on our lunch menus at our schools. October 30th will be the corn and November 20th, we're doing the green beans. That's normally our holiday meal, so that sounds yummy. Transportation, we're on track to receive, you know, we ordered 20 buses for this year. We're on track to start receiving those buses in November. As noted before, some of those buses that we're ordering have some enhanced safety issue, features such as, you know, a lighted school sign on top and then the stop arm's going to be lighted. And those will be used out primarily east where we don't have much lighting for our students. So that's important for us to, to add those safety features. And then as far as bus drivers, we're up to 105 bus drivers, so the work that you allowed us to, to partake in last year has been, really helped us with, I think we were in the mid-90s last year. We're up to 105 and we got a number of applicants that are interested, so we're really humming our way there. So thank you for your support with that. That concludes
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Clark.
Uh huh.
Legal?
Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to report to the Board the status of the Tax Collector Commission on the millage issue. I've, I've been in contact with the Tax Collector's attorney. She's represented, that she's prepared the opinion letter that they intend to send to the Attorney General's office, but it was being reviewed by Mr. Burton. I have not received any further contact after that report last week. I've asked for a copy. I want to just see how it's written, to see if I think it's not advocating a certain position, but rather just stating the uncertainty of the statute and their interpretation of same. So I'll stay, stay on top of it and hopefully they'll get that filed soon and I'll share a copy of their, their letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for all your support during this board meeting, as it was my first board meeting as superintendent. I was told I need to be closer to the mic, so I keep scooting, scooting closer. And I want to thank this team here, this incredible team, Mr. Jensen, Rachel Sellers, Deputy Willie Clark, and Mr. Chapman back there as well, who have really helped me navigate what is the first week as the, as the superintendent position. For tonight, I want to thank the Bay Shore High School Color Guard, did a fantastic job opening our meeting. Board members, you approved the UNISIG funds today, which is a tremendous help for both Samoset and Horizons and also MSAS to help raise student achievement at those three locations. So thank you for your support there. You also approved the mental health allocation at just over $3.4 million. That work supports social workers, other supportive staff members to support students as well as our partnerships with Florida Center and Centerstone. And finally, in the consent agenda, was approval for four of our JRTC programs to attend different events this fall. We have really top-notch JRTC programs on our campuses and I'm excited for the students and those experiences. And huge news this week, to top off what Mr. Jensen was sharing on the early learning, we are doing a ribbon cutting for the SOAR Lab. So a long time coming, wouldn't have happened without the support of the Board and the work in our district and the vision of the Ross Camps and Sheila Halpin. But school board members and the public are invited to the SOAR and FOR Lab ribbon cutting this Friday at 9:00 AM. The SOAR Lab is located on the Harley Campus and following the ceremony, families are welcome to stay and enjoy open playtime in our brand-new spaces. And I'll tell you what, if you haven't been there, you're going to want to stay a little bit and enjoy that brand-new space as well. As many of you board members know, we presented at the Chamber event this weekend. I want to thank, I want to thank the Chamber for their support and all of the Chamber members for the support of the district. Really excited to kick off a new plan for our business partners and sponsorships. Chrissy Kavanaugh did a wonderful job in presenting that. And I want to point out to families, as a mom of three attending college, this is very important news, the FAFSA opens October 1st. So make sure you fill that out. It's important for scholarships as well as financial aid. It's important for bright futures. And so I wanted to get that information out to families. We are kicking off, I did a recording this week at Braden River High School, and that will be sent out to schools and will continue to advertise heavily the opening of, of the FAFSA application. Thank you, board members, for your support tonight and for your support this past week. I appreciate you.
Thank you. All right, board comments. We got Kennedy, Tatum, Felton, Spray, myself. Ms. Kennedy?
All right, thank you. Thanks, Chad. I'll be quick. I just want to thank my board colleagues for a very productive and, again, collegial day. We got a lot done today. And I, you know, the Board gets thanked a lot for things that we do, but everything that we do is brought to us by this leadership team. And once we approve it, then it goes back to our employees who are actually in the schools making these items successful. So a lot of thanks get thrown, thrown at us. I want to thank it back to our leadership team and to our, in the schools, employees who actually make this stuff happen. We approve it and then it's out of our hands and it's into our, into our staff members. So
You stole my comments. Next time, I'm going first.
Okay. But yeah, I'm really, Laurie, that's the one thing I wanted to say too is about the, this weren't for ribbon cutting because I'm really looking forward to it. Mr. Jensen, the data from the state, that's really, 75% of our sites were excellent, rated excellent. That's incredible. Perfect example of how we might approve things, but we, we don't have anything to do with those 75% of sites being excellent.
Tucker Halpin works a lot of magic in early learning.
She sure does. She sure does. So there's something else that's slipping through my mind, so I'll just let it go. But I appreciate another meeting. Thanks, Chad.
Thank you. Ms. Tatum?
Okay, so a couple of safety tips for the day. Note to self, if you're on the sidelines at a football game, don't turn your back to the game. That's exactly what happened to the gentleman who got hit. And we kind of chuckled a little bit, but it's true, you know, if you're on the sideline, don't turn your back to that game. So. And then the second point I wanted to bring up about safety is the sheriff. We went to the Chamber of Commerce Retreat last week and the sheriff was there and once again, he brought up the fact that guns in cars and guns being stolen from cars contributes to a significant amount of crime in our county. And he said, I caught this, he said, somewhere between 40, our crime rate would go down 40 to 50% if we could put a stop to people having their guns stolen out of their cars. And I don't even know if that's something, Dr. Breslin, that a campaign, maybe not in the elementary schools, but maybe in high school or even middle school to just, you know, one, two minutes in a class just to say, hey, you know, if your parents have firearms, which they have a perfect right to do with their Second Amendment, you know, ask them, hey, Dad, you know, I know you keep your gun in your car. Did you lock your car tonight? Or, you know, you're going to put, you're going to put your car in the garage? I mean, you never know. Parents get busy and they're not thinking and if we could get that message to them through their kids, that would be good for the safety of the community. It's a good lesson to teach the kids too, that if you've got firearms, you have to be responsible and store them appropriately. So I wanted to congratulate, so that's the end of the safety message for the day. I wanted to congratulate, congratulate Dr. Breslin. She gave her kind of what I would call first public speech at the Chamber of Commerce Retreat, talked about the status of the school system, where we're going. And I thought she did a good job, but more importantly, a number of members of the Chamber of Commerce that were at the retreat also said that you did a good job. So good on you, Dr. Breslin.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. And then finally, for Laura and Danielle, you know, we had three meetings today and they all just went off like that. So good for you. And we even had lunch ready to go when it was time. So thank you very much for what you do for us. And that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Ms. Felton?
Just a couple of things. I'm going, I'm going to miss the SOAR and Four ribbon cutting because I'm going to be at the FSBA training the next, the Thursday and Friday. But I did get a sneak peek ahead of time and played with lots of neat stuff. So take off your grown-up hat when you go and go play with the stuff because it's great. I know Mr. Clark does it on a regular basis as well. So take off your grown-up hat, play with the stuff. It's wonderful. They've got amazing stuff going on there and I am like plugging it to all my neighbors with children. So if you get the opportunity, folks in the audience and folks at home and have small people, bring them. They will, they will love, love the opportunity to participate. Again, I do have the Florida School Board Association final two trainings for certified board members. So, Mr. Tatum, I will be joining you as a certified board member in a couple of days. I'll have all my, all my trainings in. These last two are for governance and collective bargaining. So I'm looking forward to both of those. And then I'll also, the board, today we received, at the very end of our packet, the School Health Advisory Committee's 2024-2025 End of Year Report. I am the district representative on that committee. So I just wanted to let the public know what that is exactly. It is a committee of, there's about 50 of us, from district staff and from all over the county who come and we work together. We have two subcommittees. One deals with physical health, physical activity, health education, and food and nutrition. And the other one deals with behavioral health and wellness. I generally am on the subcommittee number two, although I float. And some of the things that we are working on is policy to make sure that our kids get everything they need in schools, nursing, staffing, nutrition, social emotional development, all of the statutes that we get regarding that, that we have to, you know, take care of. And it's, it's a wonderful committee. We have members from throughout the community. I'm, as you know, on the Children's Services, County Children's Services Advisory Board. I've roped in two of my fellow CSAB members. They now come to the Shack as well. And, and anybody who is, provides a social service of some kind in the county is welcome to join us as well. So if anybody out there is interested, send me an email. I'll get you connected. Because it's a great committee. We come up with really wonderful things and really wonderful goals. So when you get a chance to read over that report, let me know if you have any questions. And really, that's about it for me. I'm glad to be here after being sick the last couple of weeks. And, and again, thank you. There's a lovely turnout today. We had wonderful tons of kids and we still have a lot of people still here at the end of the meeting. Thank you all for having a vested interest in what occurs in the school district and I appreciate your attendance.
Thank you, Ms. Spray.
I don't have a whole lot. I want to say to Dr. Breslin, welcome to your first full week.
Thank you.
Because that is today, if I remember right. And I did, I did a tour at Samoset with the turnaround plan out there and I'm telling you, it's amazing. The climate there, the energy and everything that Principal Webb is doing there is very positive. I enjoyed the tour. Been there several times, but it, the air is a little lighter. It's just so energetic, I would guess is the word. Energetic, it's so energetic. All the staff, it was, they have a theme when they dress some on Fridays and it was so cute. It was pink. They had pink shoes and pink skirts and it was just, it was really cute. But the kids are, they're super engaged. So, and that's about all. And the retreat was very good. I watched the speakers intently. They came down off the stage and one of them actually said, thank you for the eye-to-eye contact, because that way they feel like they're being heard, I guess. But it was very good. You made connections and I've made a few separate from last year. So you always meet different people in different arenas and it's good to get their feedback on what they think we're doing and see what they actually do. You know, there's a lot of consultants. I'll say that. There's a lot of consultants. And I talked to two different ones that do way different work. So it was all good. Other than that, great day. Got through it. Now we're on to the 7th. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, I want to welcome, obviously, Dr. Breslin, first week. Congratulations. Also to Mr. Clark, interim deputy superintendent of operations. Great job. Obviously, we've worked with you for a long time, but thank you for, for jumping in. And to the staff today with the, it was a lot, right? We had a lot of money talk, right? A little tan, a lot of cops, and not the tan that you get from the sun. But I really appreciate the work that was, that was put in. I know that's, you know, all that financial stuff is not easy. And so we really, really appreciate it. I want to congratulate Ms. Cox. She got an award for the distinction of Certified Support Professional through FSBA. So yeah, congratulations on that. I don't know if we have a camera that can actually get to the corner over there for you guys, but, but just shows your dedication. We really appreciate it, like Mr. Tatum said. And also.
Ah, there she is.
There she is. No, thank you. Thank you both for what you guys, for what you all do, you ladies. You guys do a lot, not only for us as a board and like Ms. Kennedy said, we just get up here and say yea or nay. You know, everybody else does the work. So we really appreciate it. We have a great district. I'm excited for the rest of this year. So with that, we are excited for the SOAR and Four too, by the way. And Leadership Manatee, thanks for coming. I was, I was red, red team. So I see yellow a little bit, you know, you know, green, you know, had it all, blue. Red, red's the best though. There's no question about it. No question about it. If you haven't done Leadership Manatee, do Leadership Manatee through Manatee Chamber. It's a, it's a great time. I will see everybody Friday and if not, till then, we'll see October 7th. We adjourn.